All right, then switching over to our committee, the whole agenda that was published on our website. There is a slight change to that. And I guess Madam Clerk, you're going to speak to, but I have a declaration of interest, but I almost need to add if we want to add that and then go back. That's right, right? So there is an item to be added for in camera, so I'm going to pass it over to Madam Clerk to speak to it.
Thank you. Good morning, counsel. An item has come to our attention late last night related to an ongoing Ontario Land Tribunal hearing, and we are requesting counsel approve an amendment to the agenda. To add a closed meeting item to the end of the agenda after items for discussion in accordance with our procedural bylaw, we do require a two-thirds majority vote. So once we have a motion on the floor moved and seconded, then Deputy Warden McQueen will be looking for a two-thirds vote in order to add a closed session to the end of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So move by Counselor Millen and move by Counselor Robinson. The amendment will require two-thirds vote. That Committee of the Whole Agenda date at May 26, 2022 be amended to add a closed meeting matter regarding proceeding in front of the Ontario Land Tribunal. The two items advice subject to solicitor client privilege, including communication necessary for that purpose, litigation or potential litigations, including matters before the administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board. Any discussion there, all in favor of that motion? Okay, that was carried unanimously, so that was added to the agenda. So now I'm going to go back to since that is added, is there any declaration of pecuniary interest with regards to the agenda? That's been amended. Okay. Seeing none then, one does arise. So we do have our consent agenda items. Are there any of those items wished to be pulled for separate discussion and motion? I know there was a lot of discussion on the Economic Development Advisory Committee, but a lot of good stuff was discussed there. But if there isn't any to be pulled, then it can have a move or a second or for consent agenda. Counselor Kivini and Counselor Pompous. I guess there's no discussion or all in favor of that? That was carried unanimously. Okay. Items for discussion, item A with regards to the expropriation process. And our solicitor will be speaking to that. So good morning. Oh, yes, that's right. I need to move her say, also Mackey and Counselor DeBree.
Good morning, Deputy Warden and County Counsel. I'm speaking to you today about report LSR CW 0122 in respect of expropriation procedures. I'll be presenting the report, but Lacy Thompson, Contract and Real Estate Coordinator from the Clerk's office, joins me in making the report. Lacy, as you know, is responsible for organizing the county's realty matters. Excuse me. This report intends to fill in some of the procedural framework under the county's current acquisition of land policy with respect to the use of expropriation. The policy notes that expropriations may be used to acquire land, but they don't address that process in any detail. This report intends to provide a further framework around those processes. I should note at the beginning of this presentation that this report does not identify any land that expropriation may be considered for. It is only with respect to the process that staff would seek to follow in bringing forward the subject of expropriation to County Council. The expropriation process is one that seeks fairness for both landowners and expropriating authorities. It seeks to ensure that landowners receive fair market value for land that is necessary for the objectives of public bodies. As a municipality, the county has the power to expropriate land. This is provided for in the Municipal Act 2001. Landowners who have their land expropriated, who have the land sought to be expropriated, have the right to have that expropriation be considered fair, sound, and reasonably necessary in the achievement of the objectives of the expropriating authority. That comes directly from the statute. They also have the right to fair market compensation for the value of their land and for fair compensation for the expenses they are put to through that compensation process. And they have a right to a fair and independent process to consider both of those topics. Those are the standards for the act. I'll briefly touch on the overall flow of the expropriation process and how staff propose to bring expropriation matters to County Council's consideration. However, before I should do this, I should also note that staff feel that the most cost-effective process for acquiring land is by agreement on a willing buyer, willing seller basis. This is the process that staff have conventionally used for the acquisition of land. It's the process staff would intend to continue to follow for the acquisition of land. The purpose of bringing this report forward today is to address circumstances where property has been identified as necessary for county projects, but appropriate terms could not be reached with the relevant potential seller. Under the Expropriations Act, an expropriating authority, that's the term that the act uses, such as the county can issue a notice that it seeks to, seeks approval to expropriate a property. Notice of that application for approval is given to the affected landowner or landowners, and it is given to the general public. Any owner that's affected can apply to the Ontario Land Tribunal for what's called a hearing of necessity. That hearing, in that hearing, if one is requested, the expropriating authority must present the justification for their expropriation and explain why it is necessary for the expropriating authority's objectives. The approval cannot, if one's hearings requested, approval can't be given until that hearing has been held and the hearing officer issues a report. That report goes to the approval authority, and that report addresses the question, is the expropriation fair, sound, and reasonably necessary in the achievement of the objectives of the expropriating authority? The request for expropriation is then considered by the approval authority. A little bit unusually, in the case of municipalities such as the county, also with school boards, they are their own approval authorities. So if the county sought to approve land, it would come back before County Council in its capacity to function as an approval authority to approve the expropriation. If the hearing of necessity was held, the report would be presented to the approval authority, and the approval authority must consider the report. They are free to accept it or not, but they need to consider it before making a decision on the expropriation. Once it reaches the approval stage, the approval authority may approve the expropriation as requested. It may approve it subject to limited, a limited scope of modifications, or it may reject the expropriation. If approval is granted, the expropriating authority then has three months to register on title to the affected lands, a survey plan called an expropriation plan. When that is registered, that triggers the transfer of ownership of the land from the owner to the expropriating authority. That also triggers a statutory right to compensation under the act. Prior to that, there's no statutory right to compensation, and the parties are always free to reach an agreement to purchase the property amicably at any point up to that registration of that plan. Once the plan is registered and ownership has transferred, the expropriating authority is legally required under the act to pay compensation in accordance with the act. The expropriating authority and the landowner can negotiate and come to an agreement on the compensation, or the expropriated landowner may seek to have compensation determined by the Ontario Land Tribunal. Determinations of value for expropriation are typically made on the basis of appraisals done by qualified certified appraisers typically through the Appraisal Institute of Canada. That's the process at a high level. There's a number of smaller and more technical steps in the overall process. There's a chart in the staff report that presents some of them. But that's the, at a high level, that's what it is. The circumstances that staff have identified where they may wish to bring forward a discussion on expropriation are these. The first are situations where the landowner is not willing to engage in negotiations with the county for land that's necessary for a capital project. Second are situations where the landlord has engaged in negotiations, but seeks a price or other compensation that staff cannot recommend to County Council as a fair market price for a voluntary purchase. In light of this, what staff are seeking is council's authorization to bring forward reports when they have identified that expropriation should be considered in order to authorize expropriation to go forward. Those reports would identify the following points. The land that's involved with the expropriation. The county project that's involved and the reasons why the land is necessary for the project. The reasons why staff have determined that the land cannot be purchased by a voluntary agreement at a fair market price and an estimate of the value of the land proposed to be acquired and estimate of the proposed, the costs of the expected expropriation. Such a report would seek direction from County Council with respect to expropriation on that particular property. It would be subject to any conditions that County Council would seek to place on that direction. And any expropriation process is proposed to be overseen by the Legal Services Department and the Chief Administrative Officer. So that's the end of my summary, and I'm happy to take questions.
Thanks, Michael, and questions, go ahead, Counselor Millen and then Counselor Robinson. Sorry.
Thank you for that comprehensive report, Michael. Is there an opportunity through that whole process for the landowner in question to come before County Council and plead their case?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Warden, thank you, Counselor Millen. That's a good question, and County Council would certainly have the ability to hear from whoever chose in a given matter, including the landlord.
At any time in the process or up until statutory?
I'm, I would expect so, subject to any considerations from the clerk or any other questions with respect to council process.
Madam CEO. Yeah.
Thanks, Deputy Warden. I guess, an excellent question, and certainly, as would a property owner or others who wish to come before council. I think we would suggest that they would have the opportunity to delegate as anyone would. And whether or not that happened at the very beginning of the process or at the time council was considering the the report of the hearing officer, one or the other of those two times, I think, would be, would be best so that you had an opportunity to hear from them at the time that you were making your decision.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Robinson, thank you, Madam CEO.
Thank you, Deputy Warden, and good morning, County Council. Very much appreciate this report. And within the, the flow chart, I was wondering if there was an opportunity to identify reasons or alternatives to the potential property. So within the entire process, would there be information given that suggested here are some alternates to the, this entire process for the specific land? Or suggesting that this is the only process that would work in a particular capital project? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Warden, thank you, Counselor Robinson, again, another very important question. Yes, I'd see there's at least two opportunities that exist there. One is the formal hearing of necessity process that the landlord has the statutory right to, to even take it to a third party to say, is this really necessary? The other process would probably come up with respect to the direction that is sought by staff to initiate the expropriation process. It would be very much dependent on the nature of the specific capital project and how tied it is to a precise physical space and the overlap of that project's footprint with the respective lands. But there'd be an opportunity, I would think, in there to discuss that and for County Council to seek relevant information from staff.
I think the key thing, you have to justify it also. You got to justify the expropriation very clearly too, right? So thank you for that. That, Counselor Mackey?
Thank you, Deputy Warden, thanks very much, Michael. Couple of questions, one, the arbitration process, how lengthy is that? And how much or how costly is that? And would that be taken into consideration when determining the fair compensation for a landowner? If we can avoid going to arbitration? That's the first question. And then just wondering if you give a couple of examples of in the past where Gray County has had to expropriate land? Is it primarily in relation to the Roads Department, I would assume? But just wondering if you could provide some examples? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Warden, thank you again. I'll take the two questions in order. With respect to the arbitration cost, it is a little bit dependent likely on the nature of the specific property being expropriated. Because it may vary for any number of factors that are relevant to the landowner. And I think what you'd find is that there's still an ability to agree compensation after the title is taken to the property before a determination is made in arbitration. There's always a room to negotiate in there, which is an excellent opportunity to move away from the question of the transfer, the transfer of the ownership of land simply to the valuation. And in there, that may require, that may not require an arbitration to be reached. That said, it is in, the landowner's absolute right to take it there, but there are arguments to be made in terms of the efficiency effectiveness and the relative lack of stress of reaching what would maybe seen as the same result before arbitration as would be reached after arbitration. The second question, with respect to examples where the counties had to expropriate. Honestly, I'm not aware of, certainly none has been required since I've been here, and staff haven't identified any that's in recent memory. We have been able to achieve in many circumstances appropriate agreed purchases. Increasing difficulties are arising in trying to reach certain agreements, and staff wanted to have the process in place where we may be able to bring matters forward for specific expropriations to County Council's consideration.
Okay, thank you, Madam CEO, you have something there?
Michael, will you advise counsel? We did some research into what's happening in other jurisdictions. Do you want to speak to that?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Warden. The, we are aware that the County of Simcoe often pursues expropriations. They have a specific policy in place that follows a similar basic structure is what's been outlined here. They're specifically run through their, their County Council. We're also aware of the County of Wellington carries out expropriations from time to time, but we haven't tracked down details on their policy. I don't have specific knowledge with respect to what may be done in Bruce County or some of the others, or Dufferin or the others, but the that's simply that we have not seen any recent examples of it. It is also pursued in other jurisdictions as well, again, in circumstances where I think you'd find similar to this, we've not been able to achieve. The municipality's not been able to achieve an agreement, but the land is still necessary for a project.
Okay, thanks, Michael. Any other comments, questions to, go ahead, Counselor Kivini?
Thank you, Deputy Boarder McQueen, and thank you, Michael. And just two quick things. First of all, I'm wondering if the process speaks to how many appraisals are required? And secondly, if this report could be shared with our lower tiers?
Through you, Mr. Deputy Boarder. The second point, first, yes, it's a public report and could certainly be shared with lower tiers or anyone else. The first question, number of appraisals required depends a little bit on how the process goes through. If you reached arbitration, you would expect a minimum of two appraisals to have been obtained. One is typically obtained by the expropriating authority. The landowner may obtain a separate one. Other appraisals may be sought as part of an agreed negotiation, but you would expect as the expropriating authority, if you were going into the arbitration, to come in with an appraisal, and you'd be expected to meet an appraisal from the landowner's side.
Okay, thank you for that. I think one of our examples of taking land or appropriating land is probably road widening, but we seem to always able to work through that, and you don't have to get into that. But that, this, that's the thing that comes to my mind is road widening, right? So. Any other comments, questions from that? All right, seeing none, thanks, Michael, and call the vote then, all in favor of that report? That's carried unanimously. Okay, thank you for that. Thanks, Michael, again. All right, so then moving on to our next, next report with regards to, I'm going to find it here. Sign and payment conditioning index, am I got that one right? Okay, so Trevor, and so I need a mover and a second to put that on the floor. Counselor Carlton and Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Deputy Warden, and good morning, County Council. I'm really pleased to bring you this report today to discuss an exciting opportunity related to our inventory data collection and our annual payment condition index inspections, better known as PCI inspections. Transportation services staff are continuing to work on improving our data and condition information for all road-related asset inventories within the county of Gray. The importance of accurate asset data is becoming more and more essential from both the work management and asset management perspective. Earlier, earlier this year, as part of our CityWorks, so work management software implementation, staff identified the need to update the asset inventory information for our county-owned road signs. The existing data set within GIS is outdated and does not reflect what is currently found in the field. This makes it challenging for staff as they're unable to rely on the data in any way. Further, missing data also means that staff are unable to record maintenance costs and work history against these road signs within CityWorks. Engineering staff have also been considering the switch to automated PCI inspections for several years now. Unfortunately, the costs of the technologies available have been a major deterrent when compared to the cost of completing these inspections internally. However, newer camera-based technologies have allowed for a more cost-competitive solution when compared to existing LiDAR technology, while still providing accurate and bias-free data concerning the condition of our roads. This is where the IRSCO solution comes in. The IRSCO camera is a small camera unit that is installed in the front window of any of our county vehicles. The installation is quite simple and requires a few hours of our mechanic's time to install and hook it up to the fuse box. The camera then continuously records road imagery as the vehicle is driven along the county roads. It's part of our routine patrols. The data is uploaded automatically to the iris servers where it is processed and analyzed using machine-based learning models and artificial intelligence. What is great about this is that the models themselves can be adapted to and trained to detect any new signs that are custom to the county. For example, some of our county road number plaque signs, those would be, we would send imagery to the iris group, and they would train the model to detect those signs so that when vehicles driving around in the field, it can pick up those signs, including all the regulatory and warning signs in the field. Along with this, the model will also collect sign information and other attributes such as type, condition, size, and it'll also be able to create or collect the spatial information, which will be used for GIS services in mapping those locations of the signs. So at this point, I'm just going to bring, yeah, the image is already up. So the other element to this is the PCI inspections. Currently, with our manual inspections, we would receive a single PCI for an entire road section. And how this is conducted, some of our road sections are a couple hundred meters, some are several kilometers long. So getting an average PCI over several kilometers can be very hard to determine a treatment for a road of that length. However, with Iris Go, we get a PCI calculation at set intervals that we define for the iris group. In this case, we're looking at distances of 50 meters in our rural areas and 25 meters in our urbans. So as you can see on the image on screen there, there are a variety of dots, so each dot represents a singular PCI calculation along the road. The green dots obviously are good condition, and as we traverse to the red, it becomes poor and extremely poor condition. Now, if we take a moment to look kind of at the horizontal section there, kind of on the right, there's a variety of kind of green dots and then a few yellows and then a little small sections of kind of dark red and red as well. Now, typically, our current process, the evaluator would go out, he would drive that road. He'd likely notice the same sort of deficiencies, he'd see the good sections, the bad sections. And what he'd probably at the end of the day come to the conclusion that this is a road in average condition. And what then we would see in the office is basically that road would be represented with the yellow line, saying it's an average condition. Now, when we get into our 10-year planning process, we would see that it's average condition, and we likely wouldn't find any sort of treatments for about five to 10-year window just because most of the treatments in that range, it doesn't really make sense to do much on that road. However, when we look at the image there, we can see that it's really just a few pockets of some red and deep red condition sections or in areas of poor condition. And what we can do is we can actually now, with this data, we can target some preventative maintenance such as grinding paves or asphalt patches, and specifically go after those little red dots. And what we'll do is we'll convert them to green dots and effectively create a much better overall PCI for that road. And obviously, an increased level of service for residents. So this obviously has a big impact on our 10-year capital plan because it allows us to make more informed decisions, especially related around asset management. Now, one of the other things that sets the Iris Go solution apart is that they do the, or this camera, or sorry, they do the inspections based on the Ministry of Transportation's condition rating or manual for condition rating of flexible payments. So this manual is the same manual that we use internally for our manual inspections. And so it allow us to use our historical inspections that we've collected over the last six to eight years and utilize those in conjunction with the future ones to continue to build our depreciation curves and collect our data without doing any sort of conversions or switches from other collection methods from other technologies. So at this point, I'm going to, sure, hopefully Terry can bring up on screen a short video. So this is the Iris Go software running as it's driving down the road. You'll notice on the surface of the pavement, you can see all the blue lines. Those are all the various cracks that are being picked up and the various winds of the cracks. In the top left corner, the numbers obviously probably don't mean anything to anyone, but that's effectively the ride condition of the road. So feeling the different bumps and how it feels for the overall driver as you're driving along the road. You'll also notice kind of on the right, there's things like a fire hydrant there being picked up, and then shortly, the road signs will also start being picked up. And then one other thing to draw attention to, and this is a special thing that Iris Go has developed as part of their software. You notice the grayed out boxes around the different cars, and it also works with pedestrians as well. And that's to redact privacy information directly at the source of the video. So there's basically at any point, there's no privacy information collected as part of their solution. Okay. So now that we've gone over kind of how the iris camera go, Iris Go camera works, it's important to mention why we are requesting a single source for this work. So although there are other various camera-based solutions out there in the market, this solution best aligns with the current MTO specifications utilized by county staff to allow us to draw comparisons with our existing data. Further, the camera can be installed by our own mechanics in a very simple time, whereas other camera-based solutions, if you've seen the kind of Google Street View cameras attached to the tops of vehicles, many of the other technologies use that approach. Of course, being on our vehicles, that's not the greatest thing because if you're out there doing other work, in the meantime, the camera is obviously cumbersome and not something we want to really have driving around with us as we're doing some other work. The estimate for this work submitted by the Iris R and D group is both competitive in terms of a camera-based solution, but also significantly less than other LiDAR-based technologies that we've investigated in the past. Now, although it is more expensive than our annual internal and manual inspections, the results of these inspections are free from any subjectivity or internal biases that may be present from the manual inspections. They're also data-driven, and they can be utilized at a granular level similar to what we saw in the image before relating to asset management decisions. And then finally, another little benefit is once the road data has been captured, we can continue to extract other asset information. And then finally, another little benefit is once the road data has been captured, we can continue to extract other asset information. At any point, so we don't have to resend our vehicles out to go and collect more camera information. This will be important as we continue to work on our asset management and. Find kind of our the holes in our data so we can extract things like guide rail, streetlights, traffic signals, other information like that. As we prepare for the twenty twenty four deadlines. For the for all minor assets in the asset management plan. So in conclusion, staff are requesting your approval today to move forward with the single source award. To the IRS R and D group for a total amount of ninety three thousand, three hundred and three dollars and HST. The twenty twenty two budget included fifty thousand dollars to complete the annual PCI inspections. But it did not include any funding for the road sign data collection portion of this work. Staff are asking that the project be funded from any. Sorry, the project deficit be funded from any surplus realized in the transportation services twenty twenty two budget. And if no surplus is available, the amount funded from the Transportation General Reserve. Thanks for your time and I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thanks Trevor, and I don't know if you were down at the Ontario Good Roads, but I think they had one of their booths there was talking about this. And I'm not sure if they're the ones that did the lunch because I know I sat in one that had somewhere, I think pretty sure it was them as well. I don't know if any others had the opportunity, so. Okay, I'm gonna go with Council Robinson first and then decide.
Thank you and through you Deputy Warden, I was really excited when I read this report and I just see it how it contributes to modernizing. Gray County overall and through operations. So a couple of questions after reading the report. Just wondering, is there any application for Iris for the cycle path that like the 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 shoulders of the road? As we do have a cycle master plan, is there a way that the data can contribute to the upkeep of the the cycle path? Also, is there any application with regard to bridge decks? Recognizing that whole assessment of bridge maintenance and whether there needs to be reconstruction is is tied into studies. But just wondering if there's an application and during the winter months, can this. Can this software, if you will, determine whether there is a need to plow at a particular time? Or is that just based on a very, very, very different application? Thank you.
Sure, I'll I think I'll get through all three of those. So yeah, in terms of the cycling paths. This is one of the reasons where it's almost like a test pilot project force too in a sense because they do have. Compliance element to the software, so that would be how I could see that working with the cycling and trails as if there's. Some sort of debris or something on the trail that's blocking it as they drive by, the software will be able to detect. Different issues with the cycling trails. Say whether there's a bunch of gravel that spilled over or anything like that and then it can automatically synchronize to our. City work software to set up a work order to go and address that. The second question. Was. In terms of bridge decks. It likely won't be able to do too much with the bridge deck specifically, but the barriers and. Maybe I'll detect whether some pieces are broken off or some vehicle damage or. Basically, as it drives by, it's just going to notice irregularities in the imagery from each drive by. And then in terms of the winter weather conditions. I can't say for certain about the snow, we could probably ask about that again because it's. Ongoing as our guys are doing their winter patrols, likely they're seeing the snow as well, so. We it's probably kind of a redundant part, but what it could do. In the winter, it can deal with retroreflativity. So what it'll do is a kind of a pass fail measurement on our road signs. It has to be done at nighttime, so that's where we would find it best done in the winter months, but that would automatically trigger. People in our science shop to go out and actually take proper reflectivity on the ones that would fail to see if we need to do any replacements.
Thanks Council Robinson, this then we'll move on to Council Desai and then Council Carlton after that.
Thank you Deputy Warden McQueen. My question to Trevor through you is. He talked about the the segmentation of the roads and I believe he said fifty meter segments. What's the point of having fifty meter segments as opposed to having. A segment that goes from one intersection to the next intersection, so that whole intersection would end up being one segment. The reason I asked this is eventually, so I'm looking at figure three from the report. The the road that's shown in there, the one road that goes, I'm going to assume it goes south is a sea of red dots. So obviously you'd. Do something to that entire section. But if if you're looking at a road and you're seeing several red spots separate from each other and you're upgrading or you're. You're doing maintenance work on those to upgrade them to a green dot. At at what point do you look at that and go, well, okay. Instead of doing these small upgrades every so often, it's better to do one overhaul. After X number of years. So I'm struggling with the rationale and having those fifty meter segments as opposed to an entire intersection.
Sure, through you Deputy Warden. Basically, we still have our normal road section, so we'll still be receiving that average PCI through that entire road section. Where this helps us is just supplementary information, we can. If we see a road that's in generally poor condition and we go and look at it, it's pretty consistent across, obviously we'll look at doing the entire road section as one work. Where it becomes a benefit is seeing situations where it's you see varying degrees of issues. And that's where you can start to target some preventative maintenance to try to create a more uniform degradation of that road section. Which then would align better with full reconstructions in the future. So it's really just preserving it as long as possible till you have to do that full reconstruction.
So effectively it tells you what portion needs cold patching. And at one point you'll notice there's more cold patch than asphalt and that's the point you just do the overall. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks for that. Madam Seal, did you have something to add?
Thanks Deputy Warden. Two things, first of all, I wanted to say how much I appreciate all the work that transportation did. In assessing the solution for us and and bringing it forward. Not only is it critically important to transportation's future planning. But the other aspect of this is it's going to provide critical information to support us as part of any kind of an investigation. Or accident insurance claims, you all know what's happening in in that world, any. You know, the when we have access to better and more current information. That really is a huge help to us as we try to assess what's happened in a situation and whether other action was required. So I think it's going to serve us very well for for a number of uses. So thank you Trevor and Pat.
Thanks for that Madam Seal and I have now at Council Carlton.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden. I'm wondering Trevor, if this is what Ministry of Transportation is doing right now. I live in a section of highway between Spring Mount and Shallow Lake. And yesterday they had their roads crew out and driving that road all winter. You recognize various sections that had issues, maybe, I don't know, twenty thirty meter sections. And that's what they were doing was tearing up that section, repaving it. So thereby saving the entire road by just doing those one little sections as they went and it made perfect sense to me. Instead of a major reconstruction when the roads got really bad, you fixed the little spots that were becoming bad and saved the whole road. So probably saves a lot more in dollars on road construction than we're ever going to spend on this software. So thank you.
Yeah, and through you Deputy Warden, yeah, they did the same thing actually on Highway ten, I believe it was the last year, there were several areas between. Chatsworth and Markdale, I believe that. I know I was driving through one day and you get stopped at all these various little patches that they're putting in and yeah, it's really just to. Create the more uniform road and trying to fix those issues that are pop up a lot of times, it's just, you know, some error in the construction or just. Some bad compaction or something, so if you can get some of those fixed earlier, obviously it helps to prolong the length of that asset and. Saves us money overall.
Probably fro- frosteving and over years of maybe some dead sand in there as well. Okay, thank you for that. And then I have Council Mackey is next.
Thanks Deputy Warden. Thanks very much Trevor for the report. Just wondering if, well, one, first question, you had the. The type of ride that you're receiving or the roughness of the road. Do we have a standard for that or will there be a standard built in that we want to achieve on our county roads? That's the first question. And the second question is, if this technology is adopted, would the lower tiers be able to possibly. Have a contract with the county to have some of our roads. Kind of surveyed by this.
Yeah, through you Deputy Warden. Yes, the in terms of the. I'll talk to the kind of the lower tier part first. The basically with that, I. Think there'd be a way that we could probably partner in some form because these cameras are installed individually in each vehicle. That would require either us driving the municipality roads or we'd have to transfer to a different vehicle, I suspect. Iris go would maybe do some sort of joint contract potentially. If we partner together to try and get some savings, but I would think. Likely from their point of view, they'd rather see the individual partners buying the cameras to install on their vehicles. And then that way, you would have your camera drive around the local roads and then we would be on the county roads driving those, so. Although there could be potential cost savings, I suspect it's probably still somewhat of a sort of split approach. And then the first question, sorry, was PCI, yes, yeah, the ride rating. Yeah, so to that. We ideally with this will get a better barometer of where kind of we're at in terms of our current level of service. We have some from our existing manual inspections, but again. Because those are obviously subjective in that we want to make sure that, you know, what is being detected. From a more data driven approach, it still aligns with what we have and then assuming. That's the case, we can make some decisions on kind of where we're at currently, what we're looking to be at as a county. All in line with the asset management plan regulations as well. One of the key things with the ride and this is partially why manual inspections tend to struggle is because the ride is very subjective. As you're going down, basically it's a score out of one to ten. And everyone kind of has a rough idea what it is, but it that ride condition weighs fairly heavily on the PCI. So sometimes the ride might actually be really well and you'll see a lot of cracking, but just instinctively in your mind, you you see the cracking and think this is much worse. And you might actually mark the roads worse than they may be in reality. So that's kind of where this non-subjective approach really helps to kind of zone in on the actual targets that we're trying to achieve, so.
Okay, thanks Council Mackey and then you have Council Bergen 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 on Bergen on, I get it, yep.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Deputy Warden McQueen. Council Mackey asked one of my questions, excellent question for the lower tier. I was just wondering, is there a licensing fee outside of buying the cameras, is there any yearly licensing fee that goes along with goes along with this? That we need to renew or is it a one time, one time purchase?
Sure, through you Deputy Warden. It is, the cameras are one time purchased, but there is a, I believe it's a hundred and twenty dollars for the monthly kind of service fee. And then there's, you can, if you choose to go with the more compliance route, that requires a yearly fee. And I can't remember, it's around forty thousand dollars, at least for the county portion. And then that would be that it would be just ongoing all the time collecting information. Otherwise, you can put it in a vacation mode, the camera, so you effectively. Cut all of your licensing costs except for the one hundred and twenty dollars, just as like a standby cost, so. Likely for us, we would complete this information and put it into vacation mode until we come to some sort of decision, whether we move ahead with a compliance approach or. And like the ongoing inspections or if we just kind of do it as an annual process.
Thank you. Thanks for the question and Council Keveney and then Council Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden and through you to Trevor. First of all, thank you for the report and the excellent job you're doing of providing information to County Council, that's appreciated. I had two questions for you. The first one in relation to signs, so on county roads, you're going to be picking up from the example, all signs. So I'm curious to know then if there could be some communication with the lower tiers in that regard, if it picked up, you know, an issue with a sign. Or a missing sign, thinking of our sign in Bobner that disappeared. And we still have no understanding of what happened to that sign if if it might pick up a missing sign. And second of all, and I know you've touched on it already Trevor, but thinking of the recent storm that happened on Saturday. And all the devastation, Toronto right through to Ottawa and so on, and and could this software be used? To help to to pick up those sorts of problems and help the county deal with them more quickly.
Through you Deputy Warden, yeah, basically with the road signs. For the, in terms of the collection of the asset data, that will be dependent, it'll be kind of like a one time snapshot more or less. So that'll pick up all of the signs within the network and then where. The compliance part comes along, that will be as it drives the road each day, detects the signs, sees nothing has changed with that sign. Or maybe someone spray painted it, so it's going to pick up the graffiti on the sign and obviously flag it as the replacement. Same if this becomes damaged or if it goes missing, it's going to detect that there's a change there and trigger some sort of work order within our system. So that's kind of where the benefit of the compliance part comes along, it helps to detect any sort of changes that it sees, obviously. Some things will change, you might see a tree down and then a week later it's gone again, so it might automatically check that, okay, everything's gone back to normal. But yeah, they, it could be used for checks on the basically our network to make sure that everything is just consistent. So yeah, that's the question.
Thanks for clarity, so we have the cameras on all our vehicles. It goes out clicks the data, but then you switch it to vacation mode, so you're collecting the data, but it's not constant data, is that what you're saying? Sorry.
Yeah, so it it can be constant, it just depends on what approach you're going with, with what we're discussing today, it's specifically. For the collection of the signed data and then PCI, so once we've driven the roads, we would effectively turn it off. And then depending if we go with the compliance route, that's where it would be on full time, so that's where it sits in the vehicle as you're patrolling. And notices any of those changes.
So then from an insurance point or from due diligence, then probably the next step will be going to that all the time. Because it'll pick up that stop sign or it'll pick up that sign that's missing, that we pick it up right away versus just collecting the first data, okay. Thanks for that. We have Council Desai is next.
Thank you Deputy Warden Hicks. My question is a follow up to Council Burden's question. Trevor mentioned that you would put it on vacation mode once you've done the analysis. If it is the question of the forty thousand dollar annual fee. Why not just pay the forty thousand and have. The camera be active every time someone goes out on a county road or goes out somewhere. I I understand it's it's a heavy cost, but it does provide accurate data, up to date data. It provides you the data on the day of that drive. And likely it will, it will, it'll, it'll give you an idea of how often a particular road has been traveled. So when you are doing your annual inspections or your the the annual period where your cameras are on. You could likely skip that road altogether because you have up to date data on that. So why not just bite the bullet and pay the extra money for the more up to date, more accurate data. Rather than use it for a small amount of time and then put it on vacation mode just to save money.
Good question, Madam Seal is going to take that first, I think.
Thanks W Warden. What we're asking for today is council support. To make this financial arrangement, to procure this with with the single source. What we're asking for today is council support to make this financial arrangement, to procure this with, with the single source. This is a proof of concept for us, so we want the opportunity to, to use the tool to understand that it is actually going to deliver what's been promised to us, ensure that we're able to use it effectively and manipulate and, and go through the information. So I think, once we've had that opportunity, we'll be coming back to you. I'd also, and I'll look to Pat or Mary Lou, I, I believe that annual, that an annual cost to collect pavement condition index is something that has always been in the county's budget, so it's not like we would be incurring at least at this level, a, a new expense, we might be simply redirecting the resources just as you stated, Counselor Desai. So I think what we want right now is just a bit of time to use the tool and make sure that it's going to work well. Is that fair Trevor?
I think that's, Pat, do you have a comment? Oh, okay.
You're just shaking your head saying you agree. Okay. Next, we have Counselor DeBreen, and then Counselor Bergenon. Go ahead, Counselor DeBreen.
Thank you, and through you Deputy Warden. A great report, really exciting, and a lot of my questions, I think, have been asked and answered indirectly, as this is a pilot project. So initially, it's a one-time cost, but if you are happy with it, they'll be coming back for budget approval. I was just wondering about the software updates. Has has there been any question about the frequency of or a requirement for software updates, or will we discover that through the pilot project exploration? Thank you.
Sure, through you Deputy Warden. In terms of software updates, that's effectively covered within the $120 annual monthly fee. As we continue to use it, obviously there, every sign that they put through their AI, it just becomes better and better at helping to predict this stuff, so. Yeah, the more and more we get, they'll just routinely keep updating their models and passing those updates on to us.
Thanks for that question, and Counselor Bergenon, you have another question?
Yes, it's a follow-up. Counselor Desai brings up an excellent point in relation to the costing. You know, if we're going to do this, do it properly, and back to Counselor Mackey's original point. Once the, the great county roads are done, they, I, I don't anticipate removing the cameras from the great county trucks, but maybe similar to GIS where you could offload some of that 40,000 annual cost of sending out to the different lower-tier municipalities and charging back for some kind of cost recovery. And I think it would be important in almost all the municipalities to do this, and that may offset some of the $40,000 when it's distributed amongst those people, if that's an opportunity to, number one, help offset costs and help the lower-tier municipalities that don't want to make such a larger investment, so. To Counselor Desai's point, if we're, you know, if it's a matter of cost savings, maybe it's a matter of biting the bullet and doing this properly, and then we could actually, like I said, mitigate some of that cost by, you know, selling the data, I guess, in it, but using it for the lower-tier municipalities on a cost recovery basis.
Sure, through you Deputy Warden. Yeah, there's obviously an opportunity to do that. The one thing I should mention too, that with the 40,000, that's strictly for the compliance part, the recording of the videos, what there's also the cost for each camera that's included. And I believe that's around 10,000 without the installation cost. So depending on whether you've got staff that can install those in the vehicles or not, there may be some additional, but with us being, we have four patrols, we would assume that we'd probably end up going, if we went to compliance route, we'd need individual cameras in each patrol. So right now, we've just budgeted the single camera for the, this run, and we're just going to move the vehicle throughout the entire county. But again, if we go the other route, we'll have to look into the additional costs with the three extra cameras and then the compliance part. Again, we can continue to have conversations with them about extending that cost. Now, the, I should also mention that the 40,000 is based off of the kilometers of roads that we have within the network. So again, if we include more of the member municipalities, we likely see that increase. So again, we'll have to kind of look at what those additional costs might be, and then kind of go from there.
Thanks for those questions. So this is almost like a dash cam in a way, is it? Right. Because I know one of the booths down there, I'm not sure, was this company or another one showed a lot of benefit in that dash cam in our vehicles because of things happen. It captures it live, it captures it for insurance purposes. And I don't know if there's an opportunity to talk to our insurance company on moving forward with this, if there are some savings on doing it full-time, as Counselor Desai and others have said, is there, is there some savings on that sensor that, you know, it's that due diligence? You know, I know we always heard years and years about the due diligence to make sure your signs are here, somebody's checking it off and and all that kind of stuff. So maybe that's something as we move through that, be sort of follow-up. Pat, you have a comment?
Yeah, I could just speak briefly that. Yeah, so really, as Kim said, this is, this is really to get our PCIs done this summer, right? Great concept. We're really excited about it. We're just not quite there with our, with our full compliance yet. You know, we have our compliance software we use now, it's been very effective. You know, we'd have to kind of rope in our risk management people. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of strange, like when you think of even our signs, so those stop-ahead signs on a, on a side road, like a township road, they're ours as well, right? So to pick them up, you're kind of driving down 300 meters of a side road. You know, ultimately, you, you wonder in the long term about, well, same as our, we have, we have, you know, structures on side roads that we don't patrol. You know, if, if we could get kind of a countywide, maybe, I mean, this is, this is just, you know, in theory, you think there'd be a lot of savings in knowing there's enough people driving around to really get compliance too. So that's kind of what we're excited about. We're just not, we really need to get the PCIs done now, and that's all we're asking for, but this kind of opens the door for hopefully just more automization and, you know, a chance to do that going forward. More eyes in the road. All right. Is there, are there any other last comments of this new technology that we're moving forward with? All right, it's been moved a second. Is there, all in favor of that motion? That's carried unanimously.
Okay, so we need to carry on with our closed session. Do you want a quick break? Okay, so we want a quick break is like no more than CEO's got the hammer here, and she says five minutes, so we'll take a five-minute break. All right, we'll call this meeting back to order, and thank you Madam Court for rattling the table. So we're going to be moving into a closed session, so can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor Hutchinson, Counselor Mullin. A great county council does now move into closed session pursuant to section 239, two of the Municipal Act 2001 to discuss a matter before the Interior Land Tribunal regards to litigation and potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting municipal or local boards. Advice subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for the purpose, and that the following staff will remain in attendance, Kim Lindgrove, Randy Switzer, Scott Taylor, Michael Maternal, and Morrison and Tara Water, is that it? And Rob Hatt. Okay. Oh, and we have Counselor Alar from the Town of the Mountains, is in attendance now, so all in favor of that motion? It's carried unanimously. Yeah, just wait till everybody clears. Welcome, welcome back to the public. We've, we've raised from our in-camera session, and only the items that we went into closed session is what we spoke to, and there's nothing to report out of our closed session. So moving on to our agenda. I have a seven with nothing beside it, so I'm going to say eight is other business. So I'm going to start off with our Madam CEO. I think you have something to speak about with regard to delegations. Go ahead.
Okay, council, with regard to the AMO conference in August and potential delegations. Have a good year in Gray County. I have a number to put forward for your consideration. So some of the ones that we've talked about at various committees and/or around this table specifically, one with the Ministry of Health and a request for funding to either the county or community partners for the staffing necessary to increase the availability of supportive housing. A delegation with the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, a request for additional funding to address the homelessness crisis from both a staffing and an additional infrastructure perspective. The third delegation is with the Ministry of Long-Term Care. Reconsideration of the requirements in the Fixing Long-Term Care Act Regarding Infection Prevention and Control Specialists. The funding provided by the province to enable us to undertake the requirements is not sufficient to cover the hours mandated. The certified personnel required to do the work are not available to hire, and the educational institutions who can certify those going through an education process do not have the capacity to do so at the present time. We do have three years to meet these requirements, but right now, anybody we've tried to put into a training program has been waitlisted. So we would like to talk to them about that as well. I had a recent conversation with the new CIO in Bruce County, Derek Thompson. We discussed, I had mentioned to him that we intended to talk to this council about removing the provincial tax portion from fuel prices for the fuel used in transit vehicles. Bruce County would like to support us in that and would like that to be a joint delegation. They would also like to jointly delegate with us around requesting additional funding to support service enhancements to community transit. So those are the five that I have, and if there have been, if I've missed something, or if anybody has any other thoughts, please let me know.
So are there any other, go ahead, Counselor Larry?
Thank you Deputy Warden McQueen. Kim, I just wanted to ask if, if you thought it was necessary to follow up with Minister of Education on the letter we sent regarding changing the curriculum in our schools for mental health and addictions.
Leave that with me too, because there is a minute, like there's a minister specifically at Thibault with regard to, to mental health. I, I'll leave that with me. I'll put something together, whether it goes to education or whether it goes to him. Okay?
Thank you for that, and Counselor Swover.
Yes, and, and certainly, we, we haven't got an announcement yet, but by the time of AMO, we will get an announcement on the ASAP program. So that's with the Ministry of Infrastructure. And we're hoping that announcement comes out shortly after the election, so that would be in the next few weeks. And so I think we, we need to talk to the Ministry of Infrastructure as, you know, the county was divided into a number of large blocks, which will be auctioned off, but as of yet, there's been very little communication who the success But as of yet, there's been very little communication who the successful proponents are and how they might work with the municipalities. So there's a number of concerns there with regard to permitting and, and, and doing tracing of infrastructure and locates and that kind of thing. So I think that's an important issue. We are in the information age, and this will form the backbone. Well, it will form the fiber network in the county. So I do think that we want to be involved in, and so far, the municipalities have not been involved.
Thank you. I will put something together for infrastructure as well. I'm reminded, I knew I was forgetting something. One of the other key issues we should be following up with is with the Ministry of Education and the access to licensed childcare spots. The wages, the way our ability to provide wage enhancement to ECEs to attract and retain them into the sector. This goes back to the number of the long waitlist that we have for licensed childcare. And the reason why we're not able to fill those spots with waiting kids is because we don't have the ECEs to manage them.
Just on education, I know we're going to, it's dispelling grounds, we're going to make a delegation with regards to the school at Markdale's being undersized. And I don't know other schools in the county. I don't know, I think you were already overbuilt or underbuilt there. So I don't know if that's something that maybe was considering, because I know from the planning side is the growth that we're seeing here in the county. And, you know, the number of homes that are, our schools are way behind on size. So I don't know if that's something that we can do as a joint consideration. I don't know. You, just a reminder, we're going to have a new government. It's going to be new government, new ministers. There's time, you know, for us to shine off our shoes and show who we are, right? So. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Mellon.
In regards to your comment about a new government, I like your optimism. My request, my question was in terms of a delegation, and I know it's a federal issue, but the thirty five percent tariff that's been applied to fertilizer that was paid or bought and paid prior to the war starting in Ukraine is patently unfair to the community of agriculture. And I, I, I think we need to push a little harder on the province so they can push a little harder. And I'm wondering if maybe a delegation of Minister Thompson might stir that pot a little bit.
Like I say, it's going to be a new government and possibly new ministers, too, right? So. Well, no, there will be. No, no, no. We know the election is June second, so obviously, there's going to be a reset, right? Right, so. Okay, Madam Clerk, they're going to bring a resolution to our next, next meeting. So is there anything else with regards to delegations? Counselor Mackey?
Thanks, Deputy Warden. In light of our earlier conversation around attainable and affordable housing, would it make sense to have a delegation to Minister Clark in regards to possible additional tools that we would want to see added, you know, to achieve our goals?
I'm sure Scott and Randy could rate volumes on that one. Any, are there any other ones? Again, this is, it's going to be a reset here, so we know that that's going to be a lot, and there's also the opportunity at the bear pit for questions, too. We always know that's an opportunity as well. If you don't get your answer, sometimes the bear pit in front of everybody else sort of at least gets it on the radar, too, right? So keep that in mind. All right, next other business. Heather, you wish to speak to County Council? Oh, well, I'll ask again later, but you go ahead.
All right, thank you. This is my last meeting in the chair, so thank you for allowing me a few moments. I want to express my gratitude to this council and past councils for their leadership over the years. It takes, and I didn't realize this until I came here, a tremendous amount of courage to put your name forward to serve in municipal government. Your leadership, your decision making, help in continuing to grow Gray County into a beautiful place to live, to work, to visit. I hope you will continue to put the needs of Gray County residents in the forefront of your decisions. Thank you to the senior management team under the leadership of Kim. There is some extraordinary talent here. And they see the vision for Gray County and have the passion to work at seeing that vision through. It's my hope that they will continue to lead with strength, lead with respect, and lead with compassion. Thank you to the clerk's team. A remarkable group of women. You each bring skill, dedication, and knowledge to your jobs, and you've grown into such a wonderful team. Thank you for letting me be part of that team. I know with Tara taking the helm, the team will continue to exceed expectations. I'm honored to count you as friends as well as colleagues. I'm a born and raised Gray County girl, and that's a fact I'm very proud of. And I will continue to be a Gray County girl after I retire. Thank you for allowing me to be part of the Gray County team for the past thirty two years. The changes over this time have been amazing, and I can't wait to see what great things lie ahead. Thank you.
So I take it there'll be possibilities of future delegations maybe in front of this group. And I'm sure happy moments that you're caught each as well and watching us all on Zoom. Or YouTube, oh, no. We'll move if needed, right? So, all right, well, thank you, and we're going to miss you. And you are, you have a lot of knowledge that you have brought and carried forward through, I think you said, how many years you've been here? Thirty two, thirty two years. Well, that's more than life. And I'm sure Tara will have a phone call or a phone number, just in case if there's an issue or something to follow up on. So again, thank, thank you very much for your service. So I had to beat that one for other, other business, but is there any other, other business? All right, so are there any notice of motions with regards to? What, what? Are there any other notice of motions? Are there any notice of motions? Okay, seeing there is none, then I need one more motion. Counselor Mackey and Counselor Fleet. All in favor? That is carried unanimously. Thank you very much.